Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman David Broussard.
Say the Lord's Prayer, please. Hail Father.
Hail God. I am coming to come. I will be done on earth as it is heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And give us our trespasses. As we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Let the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rocco.
Mayor Prochem Ricky Gonsalves.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markot.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Public comment? We have any cards?
No.
We have no public comment cards at this time. I ask you to put your cellphone on vibrate, silent, and we move on to item two, A.
Acceptance of the minutes of March 7th, 2023, which will publish on March 25th, 2023.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Councilwoman Brooke Markot, and a second, Councilman Marlon Lewis, is there any discussion on our minutes of March the 7th? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Three, A.
District Attorney Bo Dewey and City Judge Trey Hike to discuss proposed legislation to create an Acadiana Regional Juvenile Justice District.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me this evening.
Good evening.
Our DA is in St. Martin Parish, so he's addressing the St. Martin Parish Council on the same issue. I sent a link to a website, Ms. Curly, and do you have that? I've got about a five or six-minute video, if that's okay, if y'all could watch. And what it is, it's a video on the Florida Parish's Juvenile Detention Center that we're trying to model after. I just kind of want you to see what we're trying to accomplish, and we can talk about some of the nuts and bolts.
We give kids tools in their tool belt, so that when they go back out into the community, they have a new set of skills.
When they come into the facility, we're trying to advance them to be successful in the future.
Our program focuses on positive experiences and ignores negative experiences.
Our program is evolving. It doesn't evolve fast. It's a gradual evolution. The Florida Parish's Juvenile Detention Center was first built in 1992.
Normally, the average duration of their stay here is approximately 30 days. Some kids have been here up to two years.
We have kids that are gang members. We have kids that are accused of committing heinous crimes, and we have repeat offenders. So you have this child that comes in who has a complete street mentality, and when they leave, they've got tools to successfully navigate what's out there in the community.
These kids crave structure. Whether they know it or not, they crave the structure.
You have kids who are essentially raising themselves because they don't have the positive role model in their life. They come in, and they don't have social skills.
We use every moment as a teachful moment.
We'll do groups, then they'll go to school.
Kids in school here from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. During mealtime, it's a good opportunity for us to teach them five skills as far as how to conduct an interview.
How to look them in the eye, accept constructive criticism.
Simple way for me is just waking up and just, you know, being better than yesterday. Just trying to be perfect. Not really perfect, but, you know, being better than I was. A lot of activities go on at Florida Parishes. We play basketball, play volleyball, like football. That's something that most kids here really look forward to. It's a time for them to get out of their room, rip and run, spend some energy. That's probably the best thing to do, playing ping pong, volleyball, baseball, you know, sports that kids should be going to. Give them time to think. They don't got that time. So, you know, they take their time.
We do have a facility dog. Her name's Dixie. She's a yellow lab. She's been with us for several years.
Just having the opportunity to go watch Dixie makes her whole day. It'll completely change her behavior.
We have a garden that the kids participate in. All of the vegetables, goods, the local food pantry. It's one of the restorative justice projects that we have that really makes sense.
Just something as simple as taking a kid to water the garden in the morning time. It sets the tone for the day, and it gives them something to look forward to.
When the center started out, we were running an institutional model, and we made a transition from that to caregiver model using the cognitive-based therapy approach. I started in 1998, and it was chaotic. There were fights all throughout the day. Any type of resistance was met with overwhelming and immediate force. It was not a safe environment for staff or kids.
The children would violate a rule, and they would have automatic sanctions, which require isolation in rooms.
The longer they sit in a room by themselves, the less productive they're being, the less positive impact you're having on that child.
This guy's speaking. Joseph Dominic is very impressive. I've talked to him multiple times.
Now, it's different. There's no isolation time. There's no confinement.
Now, we have a timeout system, and this reduced our room component isolation dramatically.
This model gives kids more of an opportunity to practice making appropriate choices.
We don't ask the kids to be perfect. So when we notice change, we reward change. A kid earns coupons for any positive behavior. And then each shift has a night at the motivation station where the kids can spend their coupons.
Because it's easy to just lock a kid up whenever you're having a problem with them. It's difficult to sit down with that child and teach them appropriate ways of behavior.
The ideal staff to use relationship is more like a mentor or a coach.
Or more of a caregiver model. We preserve the dignity of kids. The program that we use can change criminal thinking in as little as two weeks. In that short period of time, we can change criminal thinking when we've done it in the past. So we got a great job in this last data collection that you see here on the corner.
PBS is a continuous improvement program, and that's why we like it.
We use PBS daily. It's a part of everything that we did, where we were, where we're at now, and where we're going to teach here.
That's what we get from PBS, is the ability to track the specific areas that we fall a little short in and be able to rise up in those areas.
We won the Barbara Allen Hagan Award. I was overwhelmed, but I just think it's great for staff to recognize.
Winning the award makes us feel like all the hard work that we do is truly, truly recognized and appreciated. We treat kids as all kids. You can just reach one kid, and it's worth your while.
Come here. I learned a lot. I learned how to live like I was supposed to be when I was 12 and 13.
That makes me very proud and very proud to work for a public agency that does the good work that we do here.
My favorite part of the job is seeing the kids where there was no hope or no light, seeing them have that pressure of, like, build a hope. I love what I do. I'm all in. So this is.
So that's what we're trying to model. That's an award-winning facility. It's, I'd suggest, the best one in the state of Louisiana. And what we've done is, we've just, we've literally copycatted the legislation that created that. It's a district. That's a five-parish district in the Florida Parishes. We have currently, as drawn, it could change, of course, but it's a nine-parish district. Our district includes Iberia, St. Martin, St. Mary, Vermillion, Acadia, St. Landry, Jeff Davis, Evangeline, and Allen Parish, where we're on the west. Lafayette initially was in, but Lafayette wants to do their own thing, which I think, honestly, is probably for the best because they have a millage and they have a juvenile detention center. So it's basically all these smaller parishes, the rural parishes. And the sheet that I handed you earlier is just a listing of all of the parishes and municipalities so far that have passed a similar, what I'm asking you to do tonight, a similar resolution just in support of this. This was asked by Representative Hubal, who's sponsoring the legislation, that he can go to Baton Rouge with these resolutions in hand. He's also going to have in hand letters from our sheriff. Sheriff Romero has signed a letter. I got one today from the sheriff from St. Landry, Sheriff Guidros, Sheriff Couvion Vermilion, I know is going to sign a letter, KP Gibson, who's Acadiana, he'll sign a letter. It's all coming together. I told Hubal today, I met with him for an hour and a half, I honestly hadn't seen any opposition yet. I'm sure something will pop up. There's always bumps in the road, but I haven't seen it yet. The issue, just to kind of back up for a minute, I apologize, I'm getting ahead of myself. The issue we're trying to address is kids arrested, so prior to trial, prior to adjudication. So if there's a shooting, if tonight a 15-year-old shoots into a crowd with a 9-millimeter, the cops will call me at 1:00 in the morning and say, "We've got, we had a shooting. We've got somebody in custody. We wanted to detain them, Judge." And my answer is, "I don't have anywhere to put them. Give them a summons and put them back out on the street." That's unacceptable. I'm tired of those phone calls. They make me sick to my stomach. And the other judges that I'm dealing with on this all feel the same way. So that's what we're trying to get to, and I'd answer any questions you guys have.
One, don't sell yourself short, because I know how hard you work at times to find a place. I watch you and your staff in the middle of the night, and the next day, when it's, you know, something that we have to do for the community, for the safety of that kid plus others.
Right.
I do watch you work very hard to accomplish that, but...
I jump through hoops.
I know you do.
You know that. And I appreciate that. You know, the only times that I'm able to, in like a scenario I just described, to place a juvenile, like I said, at the time of the incident, after trial, if they either plead guilty, they're found guilty, at that point, they go into the custody of the state of Louisiana, and they're with the Office of Juvenile Justice. So, but anyway, so when those incidents happen, I'm calling neighboring parishes and tapping into just relationships that I have. I don't know, there's no other way to put it. And I beg, borrowing, and I'm not going to say stealing, that doesn't sound good coming from a judge. But to place a kid, and I've had scenarios, one pops into mind where I had one in Lafayette Parish, we placed him there, it was a shooting. I'm eating dinner at Jane's Seafood with my wife, I see that detention center's calling, I pick it up, and they're like, "Judge, come get him. We need space for our own kids. We can't keep him. Please come pick him up." And so he's back on the street, and that was within days of the shooting. That shouldn't happen. That's patently wrong. And as you saw, I think, from the video, the model, we're not trying to build a jail. I would tell anybody, this is not meant to be a jail. You have to, I would suggest, build something like you just saw. I think in 2023 legally, I think you have to build that. You have to provide an educational component. You have to provide a medication and therapy and so forth. All those things you saw, you have to provide. So it's a long road. I'm asking for your support. And like I said, I'm here to answer any questions. And as this thing goes, if you have any questions, feel free to call me. I'm kind of the point person on this thing, along with the DA. Yes, ma'am?
So have you guys decided, if you're able to build this facility, do you know where it would be built?
I don't know yet. I was telling Councilman Swier before, so just kind of lay out the map of how this would go.
Mm-hmm.
If the legislation passes in Baton Rouge, it creates a commission. It creates a political subdivision in the district, which is governed by a commission or a board, one representative from each parish. That representative is chosen by consensus of the DA, the sheriff, and the chief judge, the chief district judge of that parish. So that's nine. There's a 10th commissioner appointed collectively by the parish presidents of those nine parishes. There's an 11th one, at my request, appointed by consensus of the city judges within the nine parishes. And I say the city judges, because the city judges have the juvenile jurisdiction. And I would tell anybody that the juvenile crimes we're dealing with primarily happen in the cities. It's rare that you have very much juvenile crime out in the cane fields or out in the rice fields of Vermillion Parish. It's generally in the city of New Iberia, in the city of Abbeville, in the city of Opelousas. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Because that's where the neighborhoods are.
Mm-hmm.
That's where the stuff happens. So anyway, so that commission would be formed. In my mind, once that commission's put together, they're going to have to hire a consultant to look at this region and tell us, based on your population, based on your crime stats, I feel like you need X number of beds. This is what federal law requires to be there. They'd have to really consult the board on all those issues, because once that happens, when we know where it's going to be placed, how many beds, what it's going to cost, then they're going to have to figure out, how do we fund it?
That was my next question.
Do we go for capital outlay dollars? You know, there's been some intimation by some legislators that we could get capital outlay dollars to either buy land or build a facility. But really, when you're talking about operating and maintaining this thing for 20, 30, 40 years, I just don't see how you do it without a millage. And that's how the one you just saw is supported, a property tax. That's a dirty word. I know that. I understand that. Understand the battle that that brings with it. I just, I just don't know how to do it.
Right. Well, you're going to need a funding source that are going to go beyond
A recurring stream of revenue.
Yeah. So you have to have a millage in order to make sure this thing will be going on in perpetuity.
But the way the legislation is drafted, I'll tell you this from a funding standpoint, it's wide open. So the way it's drafted, you could apply for grants, you could accept state money, you could accept federal money. The way it's drafted, it's really wide open to help fund this thing, so.
That's good.
Any other questions?
Trey, what, what a facility like this, in your opinion, is going to run?
I really don't know. All I can really tell you, so the one that you just saw, they have a three-mil tax that supports that facility. They have 130 beds. That director has told me they've never filled it to capacity with, so it's actually too big. I don't mind sharing with you. Don't hold me to this, but in speaking to the director you just saw, I asked the question, how big would this need to be for the area we're talking about? He told me he felt like 60 beds would be sufficient. Again, you're talking about the small parishes. I mean, St. Landry, you know, Iberia, it's the little rural parishes. But the cost on that, I don't know. He did tell me, the gentleman you just saw is the, was on the commission in 2013. They came up with the latest regs on what you have to have in the facility, the specs, like what you have to build. And he told me it's very expensive. He also told me that very, not very likely you could take an existing building and retrofit it. It'd probably have to be new from the ground up. You saw things like a football field and a gym. I think that has to be in there per the regs. I don't think that's just gratuitous stuff. I've been to the one in Terabon Parish and visited their facility. They have an indoor gymnasium, you know? I toured that place. It's a beautiful place. They hold 32 juveniles. I was very impressed. I asked the director, I said, "How do you discipline them? You've got some bad kids in here. How do you hold them accountable?" Food, they get three hot meals, but if they act out, they get a cold meal. At the beginning of the week, they get X number of points. If they've kept all their points, at the end of the week, they get a hot meal from whatever restaurant in town. They use food to help, does that make sense?
Right.
Kind of control, control. He told me that he finds that female officers are better. He finds the males tend to be a little bit overbearing. He prefers to have female officers because you're dealing with mostly young boys.
Right.
So it's, it's quite a, it's quite a thing, but the need is there, and I'm just trying to fill it in some way.
Any other questions, comments?
One more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
If no one else has one.
Yeah, I was getting ready to ask that.
Okay.
Okay.
It's okay.
So the Florida facility, did he by any chance tell you what the recidivism rate is there?
He didn't.
Because this is a great program, but that would be interesting to find out.
That would be. So again, they're holding kids prior to trial. I think you saw on the video, he said about a 30-day stay is their average stay. I don't have an answer on that.
Okay, no problem. I was just thinking, I mean, how do they tell the program is really working? I mean, is there, can they measure how many of the kids?
The Office of Juvenile Justice, which is where the kids are sent after trial, if they're found guilty, I'm just going to tell you, it's a broken agency.
Okay.
It's utterly broken. I don't think anybody can argue that. They, and part of the problem, too, was exacerbated. In 2016, we raised the age, so we brought the age up for juvenile offenders from 17 up to 18. So you're taking the 17-year-olds, you're pushing them from the adult system down to the juvenile system, which is fine philosophically. I agree with that. I can't argue with that, but they didn't fund it.
Okay.
They didn't, they didn't allocate resources to deal with the 17-year-olds. And look, when they're hitting that 16, 17-year-old age, that's, that's where a lot of the violent crime happens, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So this has all been exacerbated because of that raised age. They raised the age, fine, no problem, but they didn't allocate resources into the juvenile system to deal with that problem, so.
Okay.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So you said a facility like this is used to house kids until trial or until they plead guilty or something like that?
Yes, ma'am.
So what kinds of facilities do they go to afterwards?
So those are the ones owned by the state, the Office of Juvenile Justice. I haven't toured any of them. The newest one that we have, that I'm aware of, that the state has, I should say, is in Bunky. It's called Acadiana Youth Center, I think is what it's called. I mean, they've got lots of problems, though.
Looks like a jail.
I mean, the one that's been in the news a lot lately, it's no secret, is the one in St. Martin. I mean, there's violence, there's riots, it's dangerous for the kids, it's dangerous for the, for the guards. I don't know that those state facilities have what you just saw, basketball, gardens, a dog, you know, football, rewards. You got to have that stuff. He said it. You got to have that stuff to keep the violence down. You can't just lock them up. You can't, it doesn't work. We know it doesn't work. You have to have things for them to do and to better themselves. Because, look, at 15, 16, 17, they're coming out. They're coming back into society. You got to work with them some kind of way, so.
Got to educate them.
Got to educate them, got to do all of that. They're coming back out, and they're going to, you got to make them productive members of society some kind of way, so.
Judge, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, guys. Hopefully you guys can, as I said, so Iberia Parish voted unanimously, by the way, to support this concept, so I'd appreciate the same. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trey.
Thank you all. Trudy.
Superintendent Heath Hewlett to discuss upcoming bond proposition for the Iberia Parish School Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for giving me some time tonight just to share some exciting plans that we have for the school system. And all of this hinges on the ability for us to renew our current millage that's on the books. The school system has been very successful with carrying that millage, that capital outlay millage for, since the late 70s, I believe, because my records go back that far. But there's a couple of reasons, you know, why. And I think it's because we always come back for a renewal at a time when we could do so without any increase. So we keep it constant. We've had 25 mills for some time now, and we're proposing to keep the 25 mills dedicated for our capital projects, so it would be no increase to the taxpayers. But it will allow us, you know, based on our financial projections, by keeping that 25 mills allocated to the school system, it would allow us, over the next seven to 10 years, to accomplish $62.5 million worth of projects to enhance and expand what we can offer in our school system. And I think the second reason why our millages have been successful is that I go back to the 80s and I find one of these for every bond proposition that the school board floats. And all of the projects that we want to accomplish are outlined in the document similar to this. And at the end of the time period, we could go back and we could, I see Dale Henderson's checkmarks from the previous bond millage in 2013, and we accomplished everything that we tell the taxpayers that we're going to spend the money on. So that's what we have done again, modeling his efforts. On February 15th, the school board unanimously adopted a capital improvement plan, and that plan can be totally funded by the renewal of this millage by the voters on April the 29th. So could you go to the next slide for me, please? So like I said, $62.5 million, and this is for capital improvement, and the election date is April 29th. So I don't want to take a whole lot of your time tonight getting into the details, because I've been doing this spiel now for a few weeks, and I could say it in my sleep, but I would like to highlight some of the most important projects that we have proposed. So the next slide. We're allowed to take 10% off the top for technology across the district, and that's so important. Iberia Parish is a one-to-one district. That means that every child has its own electronic device, a Chromebook or a laptop that's assigned to them. Those don't last forever. We have to continue, the shelf life on those is about three, four years if we're lucky. And so we want to continue to have that one-to-one initiative and to have that technology in our kids' hands. And the more devices we put on our network, the more strain we have. So we have to upgrade our network to keep up with those devices to make sure, because it's not only what's happening in the classrooms, but that network that runs our school system, you know, operates the doors. With card readers, it operates the HVAC system to allow us to be able to turn things on and off remotely. So there's a lot that infrastructure has to support. So that's the first major project. The second is to enhance school safety. We've done a lot in terms of preparing our schools to be as safe as possible. In the last bond millage, we worked on single points of entry. We, so when you visit a school, you have to be buzzed in. You can't get beyond a set of security doors without being buzzed in. There are a lot of holes, you know. It's no secret that we had an incident this year where a loaded firearm made it onto one of our campuses. It was a wake-up call for all of us, you know. That administration at that school did everything that they were supposed to do to the T, and because of that, those plans implemented, there was no incident. You know, the student was removed quickly with no incident there. But we need to do better. We need to give our parents peace of mind. So we're looking at the future in technology, and it's, a metal detector that you walk through one student at a time is not feasible for a school with 1,400 students. So we, it was never intended for us to be able to scan every student, nor did we want students to feel like they had to be searched to come to school, you know. But there's technology now that would allow us to search for weapons with students not even knowing it, and they're called high-volume weapon detection systems. These are things that you might see at a professional sports arena or in an airport where multiple people walk through an entrance at one time and they're being scanned. There's one person off to the side with an iPad, and an image would pop up, you know, if a student has a gun or a knife, it would locate it on their body with, with an infra, like a square shows up on the screen where it is, so we don't have to search the student. We know exactly where to go. These are very new. They're very high-tech. They could tell the difference between a cell phone and a gun or a knife, you know. It has that ability built in. We're actually going to be visiting Beaumont Independent School District in April. They're the closest district that has this implemented district-wide. So we would like to use some bond funds to implement this at our middle and high schools. And these are also portable, so we could bring them out to the stadium. We could bring them to the gym when we have large events, graduation, things where we need to secure that. A couple of other things that we'd like to do is install some panic buttons to be able to lock doors down in the event of a lockdown without somebody having to physically walk to the door to lock it manually, and several other things there under school safety. But those, those weapon detection systems are much needed, and that's our biggest purchase in that category. So if we move on to the next slide. This is our largest. This is what we're considering, the anchor project of this bond proposal, and it's the relocation of Anderson Middle School. It's no secret to you as council members, the rise in crime and violence in our city, but especially in the neighborhood that surrounds Anderson. And Anderson's in a unique situation. The school is very close to the street, within steps from the road, and there are streets that border, you know, three sides of the school. And every one of those streets have high incidence of violence that is making its way closer and closer to our doors. You know, I visit the school, the principal can show me where there's a bullet hole here. Our maintenance people are working on the roof. I was like, "Harry, why are you back on the roof in Anderson?" He said, "There are bullet holes in the roof, and it's causing leaks. We have to patch them," you know. It's all around the school, and it's causing issues on the campus where we're having trouble filling teaching spots there. We're losing students. They stay with us up until the sixth grade, and when it's time to transition to seventh grade, they leave our district and they go other places. And we can't offer the same quality of activities for those students as we do at our other schools, like evening nighttime dances. The school doesn't host those, you know, nighttime parent events. There's something, you know, they host them, but people don't come. So all of those reasons, you know, tell us that it's time that we do something. And for me to come to the voters and ask them to build a 26th, a 26th facility in Iberia Parish is just not the right thing to do now, because we have 25 school sites, and adding a new middle school as a 26th site when we're having a decline in enrollment for three years is not fiscally responsible. So I had to go to the drawing board. We had to get creative. We studied the feeder system on the west end, and we saw that we had areas and places where we can consolidate schools, especially at the elementary level. Park Elementary was built for 600. There's less than 300 students in that school now, so it's only less than half full. Same thing in Jefferson Island, there's room there. So we looked to see where we could consolidate, and our plan is to disperse the 320 students that are currently at Sugarland Elementary, next door to Westgate, disperse them to other elementary schools in that feeder system based on where they live and their location, and transform Sugarland's campus into a state-of-the-art middle school that hopefully will provide our students... Um, and transform Sugar Land's campus into a state-of-the-art middle school that hopefully, uh, will provide our students on the west end the learning environment that we want them to have, and also help attract some of the students back to Iberia Parish that have left us for other schools. You know, bordering, you know, uh, we have charter schools in Youngsville, uh, other, other areas that are taking our students away, so we hope that we could attract them back. So we, we're gonna do nineteen million dollars' worth of renovations to that site. Uh, we built an entire elementary school in twenty thirteen for thirteen million dollars. That same school today would cost about twenty-two conservatively to build, build that school. Um, so starting from scratch with the bond money that we have available to us, um, I think this is the best route for us to take. And when we finish, they're really gonna have a facility where they won't recognize it, um, as Sugar Land Elementary. So I have a, a, a architectural rendering of, of everything that we would do. This, if you're familiar with Sugar Land, you can see the existing, and for those of you here, you can see the, um, existing facility, uh, in the middle there. There's a courtyard. We will be, uh, building a new library multimedia center in the, in the middle. Um, adding a new gymnasium in the back, middle school gym, with a parking lot that connects to the Westgate Football Arena parking lot for extra parking. Uh, new bus ramps, uh, we'll be adding science labs, we'd be adding a band room, and we'd be, uh, re- renovating the cafeteria for a nice new dining space and installing a stage, an auditorium stage in the gym as well. So really, really a nice state-of-the-art facility, um, for those students can be accomplished, you know, with, with the, the bond, uh, proposition. The next slide, please. Um, the second largest project is an expansion at our Career and Technical Center that's located at the base. That school services kids from all five high schools in Iberia Parish. And those are where our students go, um, that, uh, may not be necessarily university-bound. They're looking to gain skills, employability skills, to get them straight into the workforce after graduation. Unfortunately, only about thirty percent of our seniors are taking advantage of those programs now. And I know that seventy percent are not going into college directly after high school, so we want to capture some of those students and, and attract them to that campus. Uh, right now, they, we are locked, uh, in what we could offer because we're out of space there. So we'd like to continue adding on to the new building, be able to offer some new programs that meet the needs of local business and industry. We want to hear, you know, what, what skill set do you need from kids going into the workforce and be able to offer them, offer some new programs. And we want to move all of the programs that are in the old building, ninety-five, is a, a, a building from the, the airbase. We want to move all of those programs under one roof, uh, and continue, um, adding on to that facility.
That's great.
The last couple items are just repairs and refurbishments that we can't accomplish in our annual budget. You know, to replace an entire roof on a middle school is about a four point five million dollar project. So it's not like we, we have that just laying around, so we have to wait for these bond propositions to accomplish those big projects. The Laurville High, um, Laurville Elementary and Laurville High are the fastest-growing student populations in the parish, and we're quickly running out of room in those facilities. In the last bond proposition, we added more classrooms, but now we need to expand some of the commons areas, the cafeteria, uh, at Laurville High. And then the last big category is our, um, district upgrades to our indoor athletic facilities. In the last bond issue, we built the stadiums and the turf fields. Um, that has proven to be a very, very great investment. We have people that come from other parishes to use our facilities when, when they're rained out at their schools. Um, but we want to do some, uh, enhancements to our gyms as well. The New Iberia Senior High Gym has not been touched since it was built in nineteen sixty-seven. Um, if you've ever been to a graduation or a basketball game, those bleachers are horrible to get up in, and especially for elderly, uh, people who attend events there, so we're, uh, we want to redo all the bleachers in the gyms, redo the floors, really, really spruce them up and, and make them a night. Because people use our gym, community members, uh, groups can use our gym for community events, you know, it's not just athletics, it's graduation, it's other things that happen there. So all of these projects and more, I went through them really quickly. I just hit the highlights, you know, can be accomplished if, if the voters, uh, agree to, to float our twenty-five mills. Again, let us to con- continue to collect that, that, um, with no increase to their property taxes, we can accomplish all of this for our kids and continue to grow. You know, I visit other districts, I visit, you know, meetings in other parishes, and we are blessed with the facilities that we have in Iberia Parish. I walk into some schools in other districts and, and can't believe, you know, how they compare to what we have. We have new, modern facilities across our district, and it's because we've, what we've been able to accomplish through this bond over the years. Um, so I just want to, um, en- encourage you to, to go out and vote on April the twenty-ninth. This is a talking point that I'd like to share. Um, this is from the twenty-twenty-two Tax Commission Report. When we look at the property tax millages in Iberia Parish compared to every parish that touches us, it's a great value to live in Iberia Parish. We pay, you know, the, the closest to us is eighty-six point nine in Lafayette, but when you look at St. Mary and St. Martin, over a hundred mills, vermilion ninety-three. You know, we have a, a, it's, it's good to live in Iberia Parish, and we get a lot for our money, um, uh, here. So I'd like to just encourage people to do that, and I just want to leave you with one more thing on the last slide. Um, is that the school system has a, an excellent credit rating for our school system when compared to others, and we, it's because we're fiscally responsible, we make good choices, and because of that, every time we've, we have had a bond issue since nineteen ninety-eight, we take advantage of refunding or refinancing when we can to get lower interest rates. And since nineteen ninety-eight, because of our good credit rating and the, uh, us taking advantage of those opportunities, we saved the taxpayers five point five million dollars, you know, just by, by, by getting better interest rates on our bonds. So, early voting on the next slide is, uh, April fifteenth to the twenty-second, uh, and then the election is on the twenty-ninth. And, um, I just would like for you, if anybody comes to you and be able, and asks questions about what the school board has planned, I wanted you to have the information, uh, at your fingertips and, um, and of course, if you want more specifics, feel free to call me at the office and I'll be happy to sit down and talk about this with anybody. It's, you know, what, uh, I've been doing for the past few months, and, um, and I, I'm just excited and, and hope that we could see all of these things come to fruition.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great plan.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Comments, questions?
Hey Heath, just a quick question. So I'm assuming before the relocation of Anderson, you're gonna have to shut that school down and do this type of renovation, huh?
That's correct.
I would think so.
Yeah, we, we, um, I met with Sugar Land's staff first, and we're gonna keep those students in place for one more year. Um, that will, if it passes on April twenty-ninth, we'll begin working with our architects, uh, getting the plans done, but we're not gonna move any students next year. We'll do all the work that we can without disrupting the students, so they'll start on the gym, they'll start on the, 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 um, the new science lab and whatever they could accomplish, uh, because I don't, it's not a good idea to move kids mid-year, so, uh, but that, that's the plan.
The amount of work I see in that photo, it would be, yeah, hard to do, accomplish without, okay?
That's right.
Yes, sir.
In, in, in event, well, in the future, uh, are y'all considering changing the name of the new, of the new school?
That, that hasn't been decided yet. In the past, when, when that has happened, the, the school board has voted on a new name. We would, um, go to students at the school and, and, um, ask them to give us, uh, suggestions or nominations, and we narrow it down, and then the school board would vote. That's how it's been handled in the past. I'm assuming, uh, just, you know, that the name would change because Anderson is named that because of its, its location, so, so we would probably, uh, look into doing something similar.
Yes, ma'am.
Consider JB Henderson Middle School.
Yes, sir.
So, kind of speaking on JB Henderson, um, Anderson Street School is a historic school for the black community. And so, I know it's gonna be empty, but I'm just gonna ask that you guys don't leave it empty too long, because one, it's gonna get vandalized. Two, let's do something positive with it, and three, don't tear it down, because it has a lot of historic significance to the black community.
Yeah, there, there, there are some issues with the facility, but i- it still is in good shape to be able to be repurposed. You know, I'd like to see something there, an after-school center for kids, you know, a place where they could go for tutoring. Um, the gym is in good facilities, if, you know, a recreation, you know, some, if we can get somebody to take it over, so we'd be willing to work with a group who would have interest so that we could repurpose that facility.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Item three C.
Becky Collins to discuss the twenty-twenty-three Literary Festival.
I would first of all like to thank the city of New Iberia. Seven, this, seven years ago, when we started our Books Along the Tesh Literary Festival, it was called the Dave Robichaud Fest- Literary Festival. But in the course of the past seven years, one thing that has remained constant has been the support of the city. I would especially like to commend Heather Domang, who works herself silly and her crew for providing tables, chairs, and a great deal of patience in putting this on. We kick off on March the thirty-first. We're gonna start by having over two hundred children, students, arrive to listen to a presentation on the history of Buck Johnson. Then that's followed by a presentation by Dr. Barry Ansellet about the sounds of Iberia Parish, our famous musicians. He's written a book. And then it then, Father Toupes is going to do a presentation of some sort. But that's just the beginning of it. Because the festival includes tours. We have a bus tour of Dave Robichaud's favorite places to go. We have a walking tour, a bike tour. On Sunday, we end up with a boat tour. We have people coming from very many states, but we also have people coming from out of the country. We attract Dave Robichaud fans from all over, and we try not to disappoint them. And one of the ways that we do that, we provide special events. Some events are ticketed, require, uh, a little bit of money. Others are free. On, um, Friday night, we are having, uh, uh, Jazz It Up reception, the, uh, uh, Buck Johnson Brass Band is going to be kicking off our activities. And we'll have, uh, Bushery at the, uh, Shadow. Saturday night, we're going to have Terry Huthall and his Cajun band, an anointed soul restaurant, helping us to entertain everybody with a delicious dinner and Cajun dance lessons and Cajun dancing. But before all of that happens, we have even more stuff. So I could stay here and talk to y'all for about two hours, but I don't think y'all have the time. So I'm going to just close by thanking you for your support by saying that it is so exciting to live in New Iberia. I could live anywhere. Why didn't I choose to live in New Iberia? We love New Iberia, and the reason we love it so much is because this community comes together, we work together, and we pass a good time together. And if anybody wants to know more about the Literary Festival, please go to www/booksalongtheteshliteraryfestival.com, and you can find out the schedule, when all of the events are taking place. And come on, come join us. Come pass a good time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. All right. Four A.
Special Ordinance Number twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-three dash fourteen, Amendment Number thirteen, and ordinance amending the budget to reflect excess forfeiture receipt restricted to be used as narcotic.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markcott and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Thank y'all. Uh, four B.
Special Ordinance Number twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-three dash fifteen, Amendment Number fourteen, and ordinance amending the budget to reflect security expenditures for acquired Park Elementary property.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Move. Second.
Repro Timbri-Gosselan and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any public comment on this? Hearing and seeing none, motion to close.
Motion.
Uh, Councilwoman Brooke Markcott and, uh, Councilman Marlon Lewis. Thank y'all. Four C.
Ordinance Number twenty-twenty-three dash oh-nine, and ordinance amending approved budget allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the city of New Iberia.
I need a motion, our public hearing.
Motion.
Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed and Mayor Pro Timbri-Gosselan. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I need motions closed.
Motion.
Uh, Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Thank y'all. Item five A.
Special Ordinance Number twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-three dash fourteen, Amendment Number thirteen, and ordinance amending the budget to reflect excess forfeiture receipt restricted to be used as narcotic.
I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Mayor Pro Timbri-Gosselan, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Any discussion on this item?
So.
Yes, ma'am.
I know we talked about last time that this money is just gonna be used for narcotics.
Narcotics.
Right. Um, any chance that, you know, if this money kind of builds up, that it could be also used to help people with drug problems?
I checked on that, because when you mentioned that, I said, I wonder why we don't do that, last meeting.
Right.
So I checked with the chief, like I really try to listen, uh, and he said, we can't do that. That money is only, can be used in the pursuit of narcotics investigations and narcotics arrests. So he said, we, we couldn't do that, because I was like, why, why don't we do that?
Yeah.
So, sorry, but that's not what it's for.
Okay, I mean, just checking, trying to see.
Oh, I understand. No, it's a good idea. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all. Five B.
Special Ordinance Number twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-three dash fifteen, Amendment Number fourteen, and ordinance amending the budget to reflect security expenditures for acquired Park Elementary property.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by, who was the motion? Y'all were both together at the same time.
Give it tomorrow.
Okay, uh, Councilman Marlon Lewis, and I'll give you the second, uh, Mayor Pro Timbri-Gosselan. Because y'all, y'all were the same. I heard one, one voice. Uh, is there any discussion? Any discussion on this?
This is for the security cameras.
Yes, the security system, an alarm.
Security system, right, yes.
And, uh.
One other question. That money is monitored as well, right?
Yes, yes. We're going with an alarm company and, yes, yes. I'm not saying I won't, might not want to do more as we utilize more of the building, but this is, this is the basics that we, we need to have.
Right. Once the police officers start using it as a drainage center, that's gonna deter some of that.
It's gonna help a lot.
Yeah.
Anything further?
I just saw, I saw, I saw a door open over there the day I was writing the district.
Well, they were getting, uh, I'll tell you, we have, we have some parts and pieces for our courtroom renovation downstairs. Pews are coming and going.
Okay.
That's, you know.
In that back building, huh?
Uh-huh.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else? Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Five C.
Ordinance Number twenty-twenty-three dash oh-nine, and ordinance amending approved budget allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the city of New Iberia.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Councilman David Bruiser. Any discussion on this item?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Why is drainage cleanout highlighted?
That's the change.
Because that's the change.
Oh, it's a change, okay, I'm just thinking.
I'd asked last time, I asked last time that she'd show us, you know, what's changing, so we would know and not have to try and figure it out.
We're not taking the money away from the canals. Adding more money to the canal.
It's just so we would know what the changes.
Oh, yeah, but we had to know what the change was. And remember, anytime we make any adjustment, we need to do that as promptly as we can, and, and that way it's recorded in the next report that we have to do.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Please vote your machines. And Laney is responsible for all that report, does a great job, but, you know, she, she keeps us on track.
Yes.
All right, item six A.
Resolution Number twenty-three dash twenty-five, a resolution in support of legislation to create the Acadiana Regional Juvenile Justice District comprised of various parishes in or near the Acadiana region, provided for, providing for the effective date thereof, and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swear, and a second by, who was the second? Councilwoman Brooke Markcott?
Sure.
Good, good. According to Councilman David Bruiser. Uh, is there any discussion on this item?
Just think it's a great idea.
Yes, ma'am.
Hope we follow the lead of the Florida group.
We can do like the parish council request unanimously.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's wrong. That's wrong.
That'd be great.
I'm, I'm good with that.
You can write down on the report unanimously, if that's okay with the council.
Yeah, yeah, good, let's do that. So, uh, if there's no other discussion, please vote your machines, and Laney, let's note that it was unanimous for sure. Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
I'll be back immediately.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, six B.
Resolution Number twenty-three dash twenty-six, a resolution finding and determining that no petition has been filed objecting to the revoked. objecting to the proposed issuance of taxable sewer revenue bonds, DEQ, of the City of New Iberia, State of Louisiana, in an amount not to exceed $2,500,000 and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by, uh, I think Rep. Timur Kigonsalat got that one and Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing and seen none. Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 6C.
Resolution Number 23-27, approving certificate of partial substantial completion for the Louisiana Pepperplex Concessions and Restroom Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, looking through this, it looks like, I don't know, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but the engineering group, their number is 5,700, and then the punch list over here from the architects look like it's 26,000.
Yeah, that's right.
And then.
That's their portion of it.
That's correct. That's the engineer's scope of work that he punched out.
Okay.
And then we went and did our portion of it.
So you, yeah, both of them together.
Okay, so you have them both together, okay. So I just wanted to make sure.
It's two different pots.
Okay, cool. I just, I'm like.
Oh, sorry, you should be answering that. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
No, I just wanted to make sure because I'm like, okay, why do we have different amounts?
Yeah, yeah. They all work under us as part of our team. We have different engineers, and we require them to do, punch out their specific work since they're the ones who designed it.
So if, if I'm not mistaken, but this is the one I was reading. They mentioned something about, I guess, giving a credit.
Correct.
Who's, I mean, they giving a credit to us?
Uh, they are going to be giving a credit back in which we're going to utilize it for some additional improvements.
All credits come to us.
Yeah.
No, I'm, the reason why I'm asking, that's not why I was asking. The reason why I'm asking is because I'm trying to figure out, if they're giving a credit, are they still doing the work? Or they're just saying, "We're just gonna credit back," and so who's doing the work? Because it still needs to be done.
The work doesn't need to be done.
It doesn't need to be done.
No, there was another way we found to do the solution.
Okay.
And it required less involvement on their end.
Okay.
So they credited back because they didn't do that. There's some concrete they were gonna break up, but they didn't have to break it up. They found another way to do it.
Okay.
So the project got credited back some money.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I was like, wait a minute, who's doing the work? Hey, I read, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's a good thing.
I have a question.
That's a good thing. But just remember, we get all credit.
No, I know, but I'm just, I, my point was, I was trying to figure out who was gonna do the work if we were getting the credit.
What was getting cut out by the credit?
Yes, that's, that's what I was.
I understand.
Freddie.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, now.
Is there any other discussion on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Who does the dirt work in the outfield? Like, who did all that for the baseball fields?
Which fields?
Uh, the front fields.
Front fields. Uh, there was the turf people that were predominantly doing the work inside the field, inside the fencing area. So that was the turf company.
Okay, so if I have an issue with it being too lumpy, I need to contact them?
Uh, you would let us know.
I mean.
Are you let Richard know?
That's, that's part of their job to finish it correctly, right?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, the outfield needs some work.
Okay. And the next item on the punch list are the agenda actually covers those guys' scope of work.
Okay.
So if there's some issues, we'll certainly bring that up.
And hopefully that's included in the amount that we're paying them.
Well, they'll be having to correct that before they get paid that.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions or comments on the restroom portion? None?
Whatever, Freddie.
What's that?
I said, whatever, Freddie.
I think I had a few photos just to show y'all.
The restrooms technically aren't done, so.
This is a partial substantial completion only on the south field cluster.
Right.
So there are two fields I got turfed, and then there's an associated sidewalks and things that we improved and added on to in that one group of fields. So that's the only thing that we're accepting, and then we're accepting it because they're getting into ball play soon and use on them, and we have to switch it over to the city now.
So if they're not finished by March 30th, which I think was the deadline.
Correct. So they actually are, actually finished.
They did, they finished?
Yeah, most of it, so.
Only they have.
We have to go check a few things, but most of it has already been completed.
And we still have the issues of, I know we gotta get back to, we haven't voted on C yet, and we're starting to talk about D, and I'm keeping track. But we also have the issues of trying to allow people, when we're gonna really let people use it? This is only partial substantial completion.
Right.
And we still have path issues, and we're still not safe to let people. I don't want people to see that and say, suddenly we can go use those fields. We're not there yet. That's a whole nother issue of, as the contractors move in equipment and to make things safe, but that's coming. This is the first step.
Okay.
Liability is still issue, liability is on the contractor right now.
Right.
Until he finishes.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So March 30th transfers back to us?
We hope.
Only that little, yeah, only that little portion.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we're still on C, so is there any more questions on that? Then I'd ask you to vote your machines, and then we'll move to D. Thank you. And we've already begun to discuss, discuss the fields.
Yeah. So this covers.
That's a good thing. So.
Geo surfaces, involvement on those two fields.
Okay, hang on, 4D.
Resolution Number.
Oh, I'm sorry, 6D, 6D.
Resolution Number 23-28, approving certificate of partial substantial completion for the Louisiana Pepperplex Artificial Field Turf Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt and a second by Councilman David Broussard. Now we can have discussion. Any discussion?
Do you wanna repeat discussion?
No, it's okay. We just kinda jumped around a little bit, and I'm just doing my best to keep it straight.
Okay.
So porta mounds.
Yes, ma'am.
What is a porta mound?
Um, it's a portable pitcher's mound.
Okay.
It's a fiberglass mound with turf on top. Comes in like four pieces. Um, and they assemble them, and they can move them up and down the pitcher's lane to create different distances from the home base. So, um, each field gets a porta mound.
Okay. And we have two missing?
They are actually here, but by, when we did the list, they weren't in there.
Oh, okay, cool.
But most of them have been delivered already.
Okay.
Yeah. They're kinda expensive, that's why the.
Yeah, that's, I'm like, wow, 35.
They're not cheap either.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. The city involved in parking, parking lot? Potholes? Big swimming pool when you used to drive in? You know, used to be a big pond you have to drive through?
Okay.
Into that limestone. If I remember right. Who's in charge of that to do parking, to fix up the parking lot a lot?
Well, it's not as too much in this phase. It's gonna come. We have done some work, and Public Works has actually done a little work on it to try to relieve some of those issues. But the main parking improvements are gonna have to come in a future phase. Um, it, you know, but, but we know about it, and we have improved it some. Yeah, sure. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Okay. 6E.
Resolution Number 23-29, approving change order number one for the Louisiana Pepperplex Artificial Field Turf Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Do we have any discussion on this item? Wanna tell us about this one, Dan?
Yeah, this is just some paperwork cleanup. Uh, Geo surfaces had a certain duration of period to complete the project. But their work was dependent on the contractor, the other contractor on the job, finishing some task first. And that guy got held up by some rain delays, so it ended up pushing back when Geo was able to start. So this is just giving them a little extension. They actually, uh, just this week, maybe, we got a notification, they finished the whole, all the turf, all the fields. Now, we have to punch out the north fields, and they'll have to come back and, you know, just like we're doing on these other ones, fix some things. But we just wanted to make sure that on the contract side of things, you know, we, we cleaned that end up and got that taken care of on paper.
Good. Questions, comments? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all. Thank you, ma'am. All right. 7A.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2023-10, an ordinance authorizing the issuance by the City of New Iberia, State of Louisiana, of its taxable sewer revenue bond, DEQ, in an amount not to exceed $2,500,000 and providing for other matters in connection therewith and setting for public hearing on April 4th, 2023.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilman David Broussard. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So when you look at the, um, schedule for repayment.
Mm-hmm.
Let me ask you, I'll ask you the question. So why is it that we actually, um, have it set up so that we're paying the smallest amounts first? In other words, we're gonna pay the least amount of this bond that we're putting in place? The people in, from 2039 to 2043 will pay the highest yearly rate?
Every bond that we have is pretty much set up that way. We tried to, the street bond, we kept it more even, as even as we could. But when you first taken on the expense of doing the project, a lot of times with some of them, there are other expenses, there are other costs to the city. So when we establishing something, especially if we're doing something new, we always try to say, okay, we're gonna have other expenses. Well, this might build a facility, or this might do sewer improvements, or this, this one is for sewer.
Right.
We have another $12 million we're spending on sewer. So we needed or felt that we would have a break at the beginning that the pricing would be, and then when you get with the bonding attorney, they set a lot of that structure. So it's a combination of Jason Akers, you know, looking at what kinda money we can get, doing a projection of where he thinks it'll be, and this is some low-interest bonds. So we are paying less than a percent, So, we are paying less than a percent, I think point nine-five, uh, which is really good.
Mm-hmm.
There is also, I'm not getting my hopes up, but, but I have to tell you, you know, there's also with these low-interest bonds, sometimes a forgiveness aspect where we only have to really pay back fifty percent. So, there could be a chance, and I'm gonna take that chance. I mean, we, we, I'm gonna do everything I can to make that happen. But there is a portion of the bond that we might, as it goes down the road, and, and previously, the state has done that, where because we're using on sewer, we have millions of more dollars to spend on sewer, we could, there's a chance, we could pay half of the bond back, and, and be forgiven the other half.
Okay.
It's not a, a, a for sure thing. I mean, I'm not, I don't know what the percentage is, but it could be that, you know, in the future, and in the past, we have had that forgiveness factor kick in.
Okay, well, just so you know why I'm asking a question, is because we kinda know what our expenses are now.
Right.
Versus, we don't know what the city's situation for the city's gonna be in twenty thirty-nine through twenty forty-three.
I agree, and if you look at some of the projections, it, it's, I mean, everybody who's been in these seats has had the same thing. I am working with the, uh, auditors, and Kevin, and we are kinda looking at the future, because, you know, we make a lot of decisions, and it's not just on this sewer issue. We make a lot of decisions that affect the, the next, you know, the future of our city.
Agreed.
And we, you know, when we got here, I, I mean, I know the lack of funds that we hear when I got here, six and a half years ago, and the people who've served with me for six and a half years remember that. So, we had to, you know, really get busy and hit the ground running. I definitely don't wanna cripple, you know, of my city, and we having to work this hard as a team to make things happen to, that it comes to a screech and halt in the future. So, I am beginning to really look at hard projections of, of where are we gonna be, you know, when that timeframe comes. If you look at them ultra-conservatively, which we have been, and you just say, my, the taxes are gonna stay the same. Well, you know that, I mean, let's hope, you know, you have to be optimistic in these jobs. If you, if you're gonna be a pessimist, you ain't gonna get much done. You're just gonna sit here and, and cover your head. Um, our taxes have continued to go up the whole time we've been here. Now, I don't know that that's gonna continue, but if you look over a ten-year forecast, and you look at every ten years back that you can look at, this city has grown and the taxes have gone up. So, you, you have to take that into consideration. Well, I didn't. Everything I'm looking at, I'm saying, well, the taxes are gonna stay the same. You know, we're gonna hold what we have, but maybe we're not gonna succeed as we have been in the last few years. And so, I'm having them look at things and saying, hold the taxes where they are, and tell me where we'll be.
Okay.
On the flip side, we all, because every one of you do it too, we all bust our butt to try to grow this place, and to try to attract new businesses, and more citizens, and, you know, my hope is, is that we succeed much further than those projections. Uh, but I don't know that.
Right.
Uh, you know, but if you would take any point in time and say, I'm gonna look twenty years later, and not have a little bit of faith and a little bit of hope, you would scare yourself to death. I mean, I have done that, I've been to Pro Tem, you know, years ago, and looked at projections, and, and, and it was doom and gloom, and the doom and gloom didn't happen. Uh, you know, but it is something we do have to consider.
Right.
And I kinda look at them, that this one has a chance of forgiveness, and it's not that large of an amount.
Right.
So, you could do that. The road one was twelve-point-five million. I thought that was too much to say, I'm gonna keep it really cheap on the front end. So, we worked hard to make sure that it was pretty even throughout. It actually gets less late.
Mm-hmm.
And so, now, I'm going back and looking at any other bond, whether we put that together or someone else, and saying, okay, how did they think about it? Are those costs gonna creep up on us, or do we get a break? And so, I have Kevin and the accountants, and the, uh, auditors kinda looking at all of that, so that I can get my handle on a, you know, a future picture.
Okay.
Because we make a lot of decisions, you know, there are times where we wanna pivot, and, and we have discussions here sometime that, you know, I leave scratching my head because we've already cast our lot with some of the stuff. And then sometimes we'll hear, I'll hear discussions, or ideas from the community, or even ideas up here, and I go back to my office the next day and, you know, start, sometime I text Kevin that night and say, okay, we need to look at this and that, because we've already, you know, we can't pivot on that.
Mm-hmm.
And sometimes, you know, I, it, it hasn't come to that I had to say no to anything, but there are times we've had ideas that I went away saying, uh-oh, you know, we already committed, we, we can't change the, you know, the path is set.
Right.
Um, anyway.
And with municipal, with municipal bonds, as been in government a few years I've been in it, you, there's always opportunity to refinance if the position presents itself, interest rates, and so, you always can lower that payment to help your cash flow proceed if, if you need be.
Well, that's assuming interest rates continue to stay steady or go down.
So, which way they go.
Because they're going up right now.
Which way they go.
You gotta, you gotta look at the situation.
No, I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, I feel like in some ways, we kinda know what our expenses are, we know where we are right now, but we don't know where they're gonna be in twenty thirty-nine.
We don't.
And they'll have the highest payments.
Yeah.
Out of this bond. So, I was just wondering, why do we actually not flip it, you know, invert the, that interest rate?
Well, it's, it's, it's a balancing act, if we flip some where we can, and I'm trying to flip the, you know, just to be honest, I mean, I'm trying to flip the bigger ones, so that they're cheaper, and the smaller ones, maybe that they're not.
Okay.
Because two-point-five is not a lot of money. And then if we hit the jackpot and would actually get that forgiveness, huh, you know, we did all the, we did all the heavy lifting.
Right.
So, but it's a balancing act. The whole, the whole thing, what people will never understand, the millages we take in, in all those different accounts, is never enough. In other words, you know, when you say, we have a tax for the police department, yeah, and it bring, and it's wonderful, thank you to the voters, but it brings in three million dollars, and the police costs eight million dollars. We have a tax that funds some of the fire department, and don't fund it all. It funds raises and benefits, and it's to the point that because of just the longevity of time that people have been there, it's about to flip where there's not enough money. We put millions into that department, the parks and rec millage. It doesn't pay nearly, you know, what the parks and rec cost. So, in every department sewer, you know, Vince tells, stands up and tells you every year, the sewer loses a million dollars. So, all of those things are funded through other stuff, and then when people say, well, you have a millage for this, or you have a millage for that.
Yeah.
It's, it's not enough. They, they don't realize that. So, that's a balance in acting itself of what's coming in from the general fund, what's coming in from the nineteen-sixties tax, and remember, that nineteen-sixty tax description is so broad. It can do sewer, roads, bridges, fire, police, streets, and any other public improvement.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you know what we've done the most of since I've been here? Any other public improvement. We fixed every roof, we changed every electrical panel, we've done things at our parks that have, have been just neglected for years. So, the whole thing, I guess my point, and I'm gonna quit, is it's just a balancing act of trying to look at all the need, spend the money equally around the whole community, and try to figure out how, how can we best pay for all of that, and not put the next person in a bond.
Right.
But it's, uh, you know, that's, that's the bulk of my day. It's, it's a, it's a, you know, that's what I do.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, well, remind me where we were, 'cause I talk too much. Okay, uh, is there any other discussion? Then, uh, they asked you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. All right, seven B.
Introduction of Ordinance Number twenty twenty-three dash eleven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a cooperative endeavor agreement and conveyance by and between the City of New Iberia, Iberia Parish Government, Iberia Parish Recreation and Playground Commission, and Segura Properties LLC, for the purchase of a parcel of property, and setting for public hearing on April fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Do you have a motion?
So.
We have a motion by Councilman, I think Councilman Marlon Lewis. Mm-mm. Oh, Councilman David Broussard, and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Goslin. And this is the property that we have long been talking about purchasing from the parish, that would let us do a detention pond next to Acadian Acres, that would stop that flooding, uh, and it has been a long time coming to get to this point. But that's what this, you know, this is about, and the reason that we put it on now, we found, we have the money to do the first phase of that project after we purchased the property. Well, all of a sudden, a watershed grant came out from the, from the state. So, we realized, it's gonna be tight. I don't know if we'll make it, but, you know, if I can double our money, it goes a long way to all the things we were talking about. We could take the money we have budgeted, make it a match, get money from the state, knock out the whole project in one phase. So, to do that, uh, this is a project we would use Finstermaker and Associates, which is a very large firm that we really haven't utilized since I've been here, but I've wanted to. And I talked to them about this project, because they did the schematic design and budget on it years ago. So, we're cramming a meeting, I think Friday morning, I'm gonna try to move some stuff around, and get them in here, because they would help us, and this is one instance where a very large firm can, can, you know, hopefully bob and weave quick enough to make that deadline of May first. We have to do some bobbing and weaving, and the parish has to, has to move on their end, so that we can own the property, because we need to own this property as quickly as possible, so that I can say we're shovel-ready. We already have the money, we have a schematic design, you know, my little theory, you know, of all the things you gotta have, with the ones that we don't have, we don't own the property yet. So, we are moving as fast as we can, uh, and this really was on target to commit around this date. We've been waiting and waiting for the survey, and, and a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts. When you read all of these, uh, entities, they all have something to do with it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but now, we're trying to cram and speed it up to, to try to make our money go further. Questions or comments? Uh, yes, sir, Jeff.
We have a preliminary plat that y'all have, but after we added this to the agenda, we got the final plats.
Mm-hmm.
They look the same.
Okay.
So, I'd, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This has been a complicated deal, but, um, it involves a lot of different parties, and the parish is moving as quickly as they can. I think they put, they, they're expanding an agenda, I think it's tomorrow night to have this in.
Awesome, good to hear.
Yeah, so, you know, mid-April, we ought to all be approved, but, you know, we'll have to see. And this ordinance needs to be effective on the mayor's signature, uh, in April fifth, so.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, basically to kinda get a, an idea, also for the public. So, the building that's in the front, that's owned by the parish.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're gonna be purchasing?
Yes, we purchased the whole tract of property. So, the way it's designed, we keep that building, and we kept some parking on that side, not a lot, but enough that the building could have some utilization.
Okay.
What that utilization's gonna be, don't know yet, but it will be a city building. Um, then, there is a portion of the property that will revert to Perry Segura, and then there is a portion of the property next to that, that will remain about eighty to a hundred feet wide, I think it's eighty, and it will be access for us to get to the back, as well as we can go through the other side by that building. And then, the back piece of property, which is the largest tract, will be a giant detention pond, 'cause all that water that's flooding Acadian Acres will be diverted to that. Detention and retention are two different things. Retention holds water all the time, detention holds water, and then it's made to drain off. That's what we wanna accomplish. So, it takes a larger area to do that. The water comes in, it fills up, it gets out of Acadian Acres if our engineers do their job correctly, and then it drains down, it shoots down the M-ten canal, which, which we'll tie into, and it goes to buy a tush. And the M-ten is gonna be clean with the money that we're using, you know, it's all a big puzzle. But, uh, that's the project in, in a nutshell. But what we gain is the ability to help Acadian Acres drain a little building and a little parking, and, you know, that, it, it's, it's a neat deal. I mean, I think that in the end of the day, we, we get something good that, and we'll just decide what we do with that building down the road.
Uh, good, thank you.
Sure. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I just appreciate that this is finally going in the right direction.
We have worked on this for a long time.
I know, ever since I've been here, you were working on it before then.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a long time, so I appreciate.
Well, we couldn't find the puzzle, it, it just took a, a while to, to find the, the, all the pieces we needed.
Right. I remember you guys telling me about that, and Jeff, uh, kinda kept me included on all that stuff, all the moving parts, and it was a lot, so, thank y'all for doing all that, and it's gonna be a good relief for the neighborhood.
I think it will.
Yep.
It's a bargain for us, thirteen and a half acres of land, we're buying the building.
Yes.
You know, but, um, that, that change of use, Perry Segura's getting part of this property, because he donated it with a condition, that it be used for recreational purposes. And the park, and, and the parish recreation commission doesn't wanna use it anymore. So, basically, you know, they could've given it back, I guess, but we stepped in and got it, and everybody agreed, so, it's a big, it's a lot of cooperation.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, a lot of talking behind the scenes. Anybody else? No? Then, uh, they asked you to please vote your machines? Thank you all very much. Seven C.
Introduction of Special Ordinance Number twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, Amendment Number fifteen, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect purchase of property for Acadian Acres Detention Pond, and setting for public hearing on April fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Brooke Markot, and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on this item, which allows us to purchase the property? Seeing hearing none? Uh, please vote your machines. I wanna thank the parish president for his cooperation on this, because he and I kicked this off, you know, I don't know, three years ago. I guess we started talking about it, it's taken a long time, and there's been a lot of other people who have been involved, but, uh, I, I need to throw that out there. Good, well, now we move on to councilmen's remarks, and, uh, Councilman Swear, I'll start on your side tonight.
Oh, thank you. Uh, one thing, Festival of Live Oaks is over with. I see you grinning over there, Ricky, 'cause you're not gonna talk about it.
It's a good thing.
Uh, the weather didn't cooperate as well as we would like, but we were happy that we had a backup plan, Heather and Lloyd and everybody over there, Parks and Rec, really. We had to put everything inside the gym, took out the cooking teams outside, out on the slab. We had four adult teams, and had four kids, and I think out of the whole thing, it was better for anybody else just to watch the kids and what they were doing, and, uh, Ricky, thanks for sponsoring and doing your thing, and also the others that sponsored and supported, and also the public support. So, um, hopefully we can, hopefully the weather cooperates next year. I mean, we dealt with this already before, uh, and we have a, a bigger turnout, and we'll, I'm sure we'll have a better event every year as the, the time goes on. So, uh, that's it for tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just wanna remind everybody that the community baby shower is this Saturday, um, starts at ten AM at the Slime Theater. Uh, we hope that you guys will come out. There'll be a lot of vendors there, free stuff that'll be given away, so please come out. Um, also, just another reminder that the homebuyer seminar is gonna be April twenty-ninth, so mark your calendars. Um, that's where you're gonna get the certificate for first-time homebuyer, and you can use that to go to any bank, um, or mortgage company to obtain a mortgage for a new home. Um, also, the Downtown Neighborhood Association is gonna be giving away some trees. Um, it's been so cold, so that's why we didn't schedule it, but we'll be scheduling the next couple of weeks, so that if you're interested in beautifying your yard, please come out and grab one. They're free, um, we just wanna make sure they get, um, you know, put in the ground so that they grow, and that you take care of them. And if you need help with, you know, getting them planted, we'll have some people available to help. Um, also, we are getting ready to schedule another cemetery cleanup. Um, we are hoping to, um, find a date in late April to poison the grass, and then after the grass has been poisoned, we'll probably sit for a week or so, and then we are gonna have a group come out and clean up the rest. So, please just stay tuned, we're gonna have those dates soon. Um, I'm working with a couple of groups to try and decide on those dates, 'cause we have one group that's actually gonna do the poisoning, and then we have another group that's actually gonna come in, and they're gonna bring in some volunteers to help, and we're gonna need other community volunteers. I'm hoping we can do it before school ends, because then we can get some of the high school students, especially like the football teams, to come out, and maybe even the basketball teams and stuff, to come out and help us, um, in the graveyard like they did the last time. That was a huge accomplishment.
Big help.
Yeah, and a big help. So, um, just stay tuned for more information in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pass.
You passed. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Of course you passed.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just one thing, um, Catholic High School is doing, I think, kind of a unique fundraising event. It's called, uh, sports sneakers for the, uh, for the needed, and we're taking all-new and barely-used sports tennis shoes, the twentieth to the twenty-fourth at the school, and we're gonna distribute them out to the community where these, these tennis shoes are needed. So, anybody's interested in donating some tennis shoes, come by and drop them off to us, and we're gonna gladly, uh, you know, support the community in that way.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, we voted on, uh, demolishing a bunch of houses. I hear a couple of them maybe going to court in the next couple of weeks, at least on Bordeuris and Bank, so the neighbors over there. We voted to take it down, but he got us going to court. It's another move he's making. So, I hope that we win the court battle, Mr. Lawyer. Appreciate it, you know, so they have several houses, I think, waiting to do that. So, I want the, the people to know in every area, we didn't forget about them, we held up in court on this. But we should win every time. And Mr. Mayor, old Walmart, old Kroger's, we're so glad on Amadou that they got filled up by other businesses, you know, so we don't have some big white elephants just sitting there, and some new businesses coming in. So, I'm very proud of, uh, Amadou, what we doing to keep it a good light of one of our main roads to show business. So, it's part of my district, and, uh, I just wanna make sure we all right. But, Mr. Lawyer, I hope we break open some of them houses, so we can demolish them.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir.
Old Kroger's, old Kmart. I thought I had it right.
Thanks for clearing that up, I was scratching my head.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out what was going on.
Your nose is breathing a sorry of relief.
Yeah.
And I saw the look on your face.
I did not forget, it's been so long.
Man, I, I, I don't usually do this, but, uh, this Friday, uh, my, my Masonic Lodge on the corner of Ann Street, eight oh-two Arlene Street, Ann Street, we're having a fish fry. We're trying to raise money to, uh, do what we do, uh, and it's gonna be this Friday. I don't know how many people see it, but whoever see it, come out and buy. Also, we have, uh, Smile Community Action, Fifty-Fifth, uh, Gala. It's a fundraiser, it's an annual fundraiser, it's at the K Community Center on March thirty-first. It's from seven to eleven, uh, tickets are forty dollars, uh, we also have sponsorship, uh, that you can do, uh, you can get with me at, with that, uh, you know, uh, also, uh, there's a softball, a baseball tournament being held that I think is at Bank Street Park.
Mm-hmm.
On its, uh, on Easter Sunday, we, well, it's on Easter weekend.
Yeah.
I think it starts Good Friday, and it ends on Easter. Uh, they got flies floating around, and I didn't, I didn't, I forgot to bring it, uh, but I know it's Easter Sunday. You can probably get with Iberia Parks, New Iberia Parks and Recreation, they have the information over there as well, uh, Brock Mitchell, uh, Gerard Scott, those guys are all, uh, spearheading that, so if you know any of those names, get, get with those guys. Uh, also, uh, I, I said I was gonna talk about, uh, gun violence and ways that we can kinda address. Uh, our campaign is going well. Uh, man, I know you're gonna touch it on that, on your, on your remarks, so I'm not gonna beat that up too much, uh, but, you know, listening to, uh, Mr. Hughland, you know, I'll, I'll tell, I'll, I'll say this, uh, and, and I have one feeling, I operate on emotions like most of us do, I don't act on all of them. Embarrassment, embarrassing, you know, embarrassing, when, when, when you're talking about bullet holes in the roof of the school in your community, a school that you went to, I went to Anderson Middle School, uh, for three years, it's, it's only a two-year school, we'll talk about that later. Went to Anderson Middle School, and, and I mean, I love that school, I love that neighborhood, uh, I was, I actually worked at Anderson when they renovated from the old Anderson. Through the JTPA program, I got love. We remodeled the football field, you know, uh, and people say, hey, man, they moving Anderson. I was like, okay, yeah. You know why? You know, this message needs to be distributed throughout our community, you know, uh, they gonna move more than that, you know? Somebody told me, I said, uh, we were talking, we had a great conversation, said you can't blame the parents about everything. I agree to a certain extent, then the comment was made that, uh, they don't know if guns in their house, and I'm like, well, that's the problem, they need to know that guns are, they need to know everything that come, that threshold, it's called a threshold, right? When you cross that, and once you cross my threshold, I need to know what's in my house. So, you know, parents might need to get back to doing some searches, room searches, and if I'm up early than you, and I search your room, and I find it, it's for me and it's out my house, right? Right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm not scared to search my house for what might be in my house, right? So, let's get to work, parents, on getting those guns out, out, 'cause it's fifteen-year-olds, they don't have a place to live, but they got a place to hide their guns. It's fifteen and sixteen-year-olds that are doing the damage. Mayor Freddie, Council, I'm gonna talk about this, at least until the end of this year.
Good.
Tell people come say, hey, man, what you got going on? We need to do something to eradicate this problem, put a dent in it, it don't make no sense. It's, it's, it's horrible, and it's embarrassing for me, 'cause it's happening in my community. That's not who my community is. That's not who my community is. But that's what it look like. Change the image by change what's going on in your house and in your families. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much, well said.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, for those of you who haven't gone to the Pepperplex recently, I suggest you go check it out, it's pretty cool looking, to see all the progress that has been done. And Evangeline Little League is using the front two fields that are done so far, uh, the back ones are huge, but they're not quite finished yet, there's still a lot of construction in that area.
But just go check it out, go stand on the turf and check it out. It's really neat. The kids are enjoying it so far. The coaches have only complained about the outfield, so that's not so bad, I guess.
No, no, and we're not finished. It's work in progress.
Right, right. But, and I guess I need to wish my son a happy early birthday. His birthday is Friday, he'll be 10.
There you go.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Parker.
Happy birthday, Parker.
Two of them, he's not here today. I'm happy.
Freddie, Freddie, can I make one more?
Probably. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, you had one more?
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I thought maybe Marlon would, but like me, we probably forgot as well. Anderson Middle School has a track meet this Thursday at 3:30 at Westgate, and they're asking for the community to come out and support the kids.
Oh, cool.
So if you have time, please come out to Westgate High School and cheer the kids on because it's supposed to be a big deal, and it starts at 3:30.
Good. And I would like to talk about our anti-violence program. We have yard signs available here. If you go to the city's website, you click on that huge button that kind of dominates our whole website now. It brings you right to the videos. We must have 15 videos, 15 different people for sure, videos from very, very many leaders in our community, people who are from our community, just trying to get that message out. You know, you see something, you say something. No more silence, stop the gun violence. There is a button on there that you can anonymously report someone. You can anonymously turn a gun in, and we will deal with that. And that's the point of this. The point of this is to bring our community together, and it's, you know, Marlon, I couldn't put it as good as he did, but that's not my town. You know, when I, I was feeling the same way. I wanted to say something, you know, I had to bite my tongue not to say something when they, he was discussing Anderson. You know, we live in a great community, and we pull together as a community because I see it every day. That's my job. But this is a huge issue, and look, it's not only the city of New Iberia. It's all over, all of our towns, all of South Louisiana, really all the country. But what we hear about is, you know, and I'm not going to start, you know, naming other cities, okay? But I talked to many mayors, they have the same problems. They're all trying to figure a way to deal with it. The one thing that we did, and it's not me, it is this council, it is all of us together. The one thing that we did is try to put a program together to bring it to the forefront. I haven't seen any, you know, cities larger than us, cities smaller than us. I haven't seen anybody else do something like this. And so we're just trying to get the word out. I had very, very little, minor, two people, two people have criticized our signs, okay? And it's okay, let them, I mean, you know, it's fine. But that is a message, I'm not sweeping that, just like you aren't. We're not sweeping our problems under the rug. We're dealing with the reality of the situation that there is violent crime and that the kids are getting younger and younger and being sucked into this and to that life, and we need to turn them around. You know, the judge bringing the thing was, was really at a good, at a great time to have that discussion about a juvenile facility. That is part of the issue. Does it begin at home? Yes, I, I do think that a good portion of it begins at home. I also, you know, we are looking at, we've talked about it, and we're going to find a way, but you know, we're looking at crime cameras, we're looking at other, that narcotics money you approved tonight is, is going to go to some new technology that I think can help. And we just need to be diligent and stay on top of this because we are a great community. I don't want somebody to see this and think, you know, oh, it, we always seem to get a bum rap. We don't have a TV station here, you know. We, we always seem to be that there's one shooting here and three or four somewhere else, and we seem to be the star of the news, at least I feel that way. I can't stop that. We don't have a news agency to combat that. But what we do have is a bunch of great people that live here. We have issues, but if you watch this meeting and you don't think we care and you don't think that we're pulling together, well, then, you know, your head's under a rock. So I just want to say thank you, and I'm asking the community to support this movement that we have going. It's in the very beginnings. Once this finishes in about 90 days, we will feel that we have raised awareness, and that's only part one. Part two, we're already talking about what we can do to emphasize, to get to the kids, to reach the kids. So over the summer, you'll see some programs that are coming that will be much more oriented to the kids.